Good morning. We now call this Chester City Council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone, if you'd be so kind at this time to put it on silent, mute, or off, it would be greatly appreciated. At this time we'll... At this time, we'll be led in prayer by an Adam clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us. We beseech thee that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Before we move to our public comments section, we're going to ask Ms. King from our Health Department. She has an announcement to make. Ms. King?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are hosting a clinic in the computer room with the RSV shot, the flu shot, and the shingle shot from now until 1:00 today. Unfortunately, the latest COVID booster shot did not arrive, but we will have it at our next clinic on October 25th. Please feel free to stop by after the council meeting if you would like to receive any of those other vaccines. Our clinic will also be visited by Senator John Kane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. We now open up the microphones for public comments on the action items only. If you have a comment on the action items only, request that you would come, state your name, your address, and your comments. Also, if you're going to address Mayor and Council, there is a sign-up sheet to my left on the podium. Please feel free...
It's right there.
Okay. Please feel free to sign.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Olivia Smith, 930 East 18th Street. Just asking for clarification on Resolution Number
I'm trying to see if Mr. Galante is not here.
Do you want me to read what it is, or...
No, we'll get it.
Chief, is this for the 10? Number Eight?
Number Eight, say it again.
Is the Number Eight Resolution for the 2024...
Yes.
Okay. So Number Eight is for a loan/grant from DCD, which is a 10, a tax anticipation note for 2024, something that we typically do every year to try to support the budget in the first few months of the year, as tax revenue typically doesn't come into roughly around the second, third quarter. So that's us sort of considering, having Mayor and Council to consider, to apply for a 2024 loan and/or grant from DCD for the 10 of 2024.
Okay. Do you know what the amount that you're applying for?
I don't know the amount, but typically in the last two years, we've applied for $5 million.
Okay. If it's a loan, what percentage?
It's a forgivable loan, so it's 0%.
Okay, that's a good thing. Okay, Number Ten. I just want to know what that is. A portion of the financial security for 2018, 2022, the Fulton Street project. What is that?
Um... I don't know. Mike was not here.
Chief, I'm sorry. Mr. Recker?
I'm not positive, but I believe it's the release of the development agreement funds because the project has been completed, and I believe that's what Mike does. Once the project is completed, they still have funds.
That is correct.
They release them.
It's a security fund upon completion of the project, the money's released.
So what is the project? That's what I'm asking.
Do you know exactly what the project was?
What is the project?
They will be warehouse in 2018.
Is that the one Bob Scott?
Is that the one by the church?
Yeah.
Fourth Street.
Bob Scott presented.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Madam Clerk.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby hire Cassandra Miller for the part-time position of Animal Control, Department of License and Inspections, effective October 23, 2023, at the rate of $27.90 per hour on an on-call basis with no benefits, not to exceed 25 hours per week. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Upstaying.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Upstaying.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission dated September 13, 2023, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on September 21, 2023, it does hereby grant final approval for the AIDS Care Group to reverse subdivide two parcels into one and construct a three-story building addition with all-street parking for the AGS Counseling Center at 2304-2308 Edgemont Avenue, as shown on a plan prepared by Lynn Architects, 1140 North Providence Road, Media, PA 19063, dated August 24, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas Chester City Council approved Resolution 104-2023, awarding street sign improvements, Project 55, to Garden State Highway Products, Inc., and whereas since the award of Project 55, the aforementioned company has changed its name, and whereas the city desires to comply with All American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA compliance and reporting guidelines, now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the contract for street sign improvements, Project 55, to National Highway Products, Inc., formerly doing business as Garden State Highway Products, Inc., for which responses were received through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, CoStarz, in the amount of $89,272 to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Further, the city has complied with all CoStarz bidding requirements. Further, the Solicitor's Office shall review and approve the purchase order/contract, and the successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the respective contract to the satisfaction of City Council. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas Chester City Council approved on December 14, 2022, the award for the Memorial Park Pool upgrades, Phase Two, Project 19, to S.J. Thomas, for which responses were received through Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN, in the amount of $299,745.57 to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, and whereas the city has complied with all KPN bidding requirements, and whereas it has been determined there is a need for a change to the scope of work in order to complete the project, now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve Change Order Number One to increase the contract price by $47,723.48 for changes to Project 19's scope of work to include refurbishing the women's restrooms, installation of new doors, exterior lighting, grab bars, lifeguard stands, pool ladders, stainless steel covers, vacuum cleaner, and miscellaneous painting. Further, all work is to be performed to the satisfaction of Chester City Council and the engineer. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Upstaying.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does authorize the proper city official to prepare requests for proposals, to solicit sealed proposals for the following services for the City of Chester. Number one, cleaning services for the Chester Police Station, and number two, citywide parcel condition survey services. Further, it does authorize the city clerk to advertise the aforementioned notices. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does authorize the proper city official to prepare bid specifications for the Chester City Public Works Garage Site Improvement Project to be available through PennBid. Further, it does authorize the city clerk to advertise the aforementioned notice. So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas Delaware County Council has established the Delco Greenways Grant Program to be utilized by the municipalities of Delaware County, and whereas the Delco Greenways conserve, enhance, connect, or planning and design grants may be used by the municipality for the improvement or acquisition of recreation land or planning services for such activities, and whereas the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires to participate in the Delco Greenways Grant Program in order to help fund the Sun Village Community Spray Park Project, and whereas the City of Chester will have available any and all funding needed to complete this project, now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania hereby approves the filing of an application for the Delaware County Municipal Grant Program Assistance, and number two, that Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file the appropriate forms with the Delaware County Planning Department. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the City of Chester was designated as a distressed municipality under the authority of the Municipality's Financial Recovery Act on April 25, 1996, and whereas the City of Chester desires to make an application for financial aid by way of loans, grants, and otherwise under and by authority of the Municipality's Financial Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, and whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development makes available loans and grants and aid to such projects through the Municipality's Financial Recovery Program for projects that implement adopted recovery plan strategies, now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the elected Council of the City of Chester is hereby authorized to make an application for such a loan or grant under the authority of the Municipality's Financial Recovery Act. Be it further resolved that the proper officers of the City of Chester are hereby authorized on behalf of the City of Chester to execute applications, agreements, contracts, or other documents necessary to apply for and to secure aid for the City of Chester from the Department of Community and Economic Development under and by authority of the Municipality's Financial Recovery Act. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas City of Chester applicant desires to undertake the project Highland Avenue East Coast Greenway Connector, project title, and whereas the applicant desires to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Department a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project, and whereas the application package includes a document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, and whereas the applicant understands that the contents of the document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, including appendices referred to therein, will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between the applicant and the department. Now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, the grant application may be electronically signed on behalf of the applicant by Leonard Lightner, who at the time of signing has a title of Chief of Staff, and the email address of L. Lightner@ChesterCity.com. Number two, if this official signs the grant application electronic authorization prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. Number three, if the applicant is awarded a grant, the grant application electronic authorization signed by the above official will become the applicant/grantee's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant/grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Number four, any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who at the time of signing of the amendment has the title specified in paragraph one, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas on August 24, 2022, Chester City Council approved the final land development plan for the project at 218-224 Fulton Street, Chester, PA 19013, and whereas a financial security bond was received in the amount of $42,961, and whereas Mike Gilhall, Sr., has requested the release of the financial security funds associated with the development of 218-224 Fulton Street, Chester, PA 19013. Now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the release of $38,421.90 in accordance with the recommendation of the city engineer, who has conducted an inspection of the property and has determined a substantial portion of the project has been completed, and the remaining funds will be released upon receipt of the final certificate of occupancy. So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance, and as shown on expenditure approval list dated September 13, 2023, September 22, 2023, and September 25, 2023, attached hereto and made a part herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance. So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
No.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Okay. We have an ordinance, Bill Number 17, on its first reading, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting New Article 361 pursuant to the improvement of deteriorating real property or areas tax exemption act, IDRPA, entitled residential, of Title V, property tax abatement of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended by authorizing tax exemptions from property tax for certain deteriorated residential property, defining eligible deteriorated residential areas, setting a maximum exemption amount and an exemption schedule, and providing a procedure for securing an exemption, and submitting documentation to meet application requirements.
Mayor and Council, after looking through this ordinance, Bill Number 17, I would like to request a motion to have an amendment in 361.04 Exemption Schedule B, Section B. I would like to amend this, or I would request, I'm requesting a motion to amend the ordinance to read 100% from Year 1 through Year 10, an exemption schedule, Section B. This is on Page 7.
No. Section B goes 50 to 10.
There's been a motion made to amend. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been seconded to amend the section of the bill. Madam Clerk, could you call the rule?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
No.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
We have another ordinance, Bill Number 18, on its first reading, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting New Article 363 pursuant to the local economic revitalization tax assistance law, LERTA, entitled Industrial and Commercial, of Title V, property tax abatement of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended by authorizing tax exemptions from property tax for certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, or other business property, defining eligible deteriorated areas, setting a maximum exemption amount and an exemption schedule, and providing a procedure for securing an exemption. I move that we pass Bill Number 18 on its first reading.
My second, that we pass Bill Number 18 on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, there was a motion to amend Bill Number 17, which was passed. Now, I believe we have to make a motion, or we have to reread the ordinance with the amendment so that we can make a motion to pass the ordinance for the first reading.
Okay.
Go back to Bill Number 17.
So...
Do I need to reread it?
There's a motion to pass the ordinance as amended. Then there's a second, and then there's a vote on that, and then the ordinance will be read.
I move that we pass Bill Number 17 as amended on its first reading.
My second, that we pass Bill Number 17 with the amendment in its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Now we have to read it.
It's gonna be nice, good. It's good? Confuse me, but okay.
You good now?
Yes.
We have a proclamation presentation to the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, recognizing White Kane Day.
The proclamation. In celebration of White Kane Month, whereas in Pennsylvania and across the nation, October celebrates the independence of people who are blind or visually impaired. Whereas White Kane Month is a time to raise public awareness of these important mobility tools for people who are blind or visually impaired. Whereas the original purpose was a safety reminder to promote courtesy and special consideration to blind people who are navigating America's streets and roadways. Whereas since the first observance, it has taken on greater meaning as a time to celebrate the self-sufficiency of people who are blind or visually impaired and their right to participate fully in society. Whereas the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, CBVI, continues the tradition, focusing on the independence of people who are blind or visually impaired with the white cane as a symbol of that independence. Whereas Pennsylvania's White Kane Law states, "The driver of a vehicle shall yield the right-of-way to any totally or partially blind pedestrian carrying a clearly visible white cane or accompanied by a guide dog, and shall take such precautions as may be necessary to avoid injury or endangering the pedestrian, and if necessary, shall stop the vehicle in order to prevent injury or danger to the pedestrian." Whereas CBVI seeks to heighten awareness about the lives of individuals who are blind and visually impaired in our communities, and the degree of autonomy they achieve through rehabilitation and training. Whereas Candy Bantam, Prevention of Blindness Specialist at CBVI said, "We hope that sighted individuals will learn something new about the white cane, guide dogs, and the people who use them." Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the Council members of the City of Chester, do hereby recognize October 2023 as White Kane Month in recognition of the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired mission and services for individuals with blindness and visual impairment.
We have representatives from the Center for Blind and Visually Impaired with us. We actually would come and address your community.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Wesley. We are located at 100 West 15th Street. I am the new administrator-director at the center. My start date was August 1. With me today, I will have Tom Campbell, which is our secretary for the center.
Mr. Campbell, would you like to make some comments?
Yes. I'd like to let you know that I am totally blind. I have...
I have also participated in receiving services from the Blind Center as well. I would really encourage a lot, all of you today, if you do have individuals that are visually impaired or they're losing their sight in some way or another, if you feel that they may need help, to please contact us so that we can provide the proper services that we would give to be able to help them so that they would be able to live independently on their own. And it's just not a a hard thing to go through. If you do this like when they, you notice that their vision is actually getting deteriorating or whatever, you can pretty much just catch, be able to catch this issue before they actually lose their sight, you will be able to help them in a way so that they would be able to just pick up right where they left off, so. Our contact number, you can call the Blind Center at six one zero eight seven four one four seven six. Again, that number is six one zero eight seven four one four seven six. And you're more than welcome to call, get information about the Blind Center. If you have, like I said, any friends or family members that are losing their vision, please feel free to contact us, and we can help you out as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Before the both of you, before the both of you leave, number one, Mr. Daniel, I know you, and I know you'll do an excellent job as the new director of the center. I've seen the work that you've done in this community in the past, and you are a go-getter and a hard worker, so we look forward to working with you. Mr. Campbell, there is a, there, first of all, the Blind Center is a place where many of folk, many of folk have received services. I've had the pleasure of visiting there on a number of occasions. You have a program that I hope one day will come here to the city. And that program was done in Harrisburg many years ago. It's a program called Walk a Mile in My Shoes. And you brought many of those persons who were visually impaired to Harrisburg, and there were different things and challenges that you asked of the representatives that were in place. And we got a better understanding of what it is, of what it is, a snippet of what it is that you go through, some of your challenges, and how you meet those challenges on a daily basis. So we look forward to continuously working with you and your continuous success. Thank you, and once again, on behalf of myself and council, congratulations on this day. Thank you. Okay. We now open up the microphone. Masala Johnson.
Good morning to all.
Good morning.
Before I start talking about my problem, I would like to ask a question to the council. What is animal control? What animal are you controlling, and what are you doing with this animal? I mean, is it skunk, is it opossum, is it dog? I mean, what animal control is?
The main focus, the main focus when we deal with animal control is basically dogs, possibly cats. There are some other animals from the park area that we have to deal with, but we bring in more professional persons to try to handle those.
So you're saying that you're going to ground the dogs, the cats, the skunks, the opossum? I mean, are those in there with everything that you're talking about?
So if I'm like, the animal control person, I believe, will more so focus on the dogs and cats. But we'll have another agreement with outside agency or third party that will handle more of the wildlife animals throughout the City of Chester.
Is it snakes still? I mean, aren't they considered wildlife? I mean, I got that problem, that's why I asked. Okay, now, the reason I am here, and I have been here before, two thousand and seventeen, year two thousand and seventeen, about the same problem that I'm going to discuss today. Two thousand and seventeen, I had a problem with the corners not having handicapped accessory. I pointed out it, I gave the code, work was getting done. When it was coming to my time, nothing was done. So I then questioned, why wasn't twenty-fourth Street four corners done to Michael? Michael indicated to me that there was no more money in the fund to do my four corners. And the reason that he said this was spite. He said that he wasn't going to fix a payment that was on my side. I then indicated, you do your work and I'll do my work. He then came out and black tar my corner with something that you would use for the street. It was spite, clearly spite. And as of today, our four corners are not done. And every other corner was done, and I pointed it out to the council. So I don't understand why I was not being done first. Secondly, I had problems with sheds, two sheds and a forest. Two people came out, Ms. West and another Michael, from inspection. They looked at it, they threw it my direction, saying that I need to measure off my land. That's not true. The shed's supposed to be five feet from that fence, nothing was done, two thousand and seventeen. They ended me in jail, paying five thousand dollars because this man went chest-to-breast with it, and I lost my mind. I should not have went to that extent if the problem was handled when these two people came out. I am doing my best to be a citizen of Chester, because I come from Philly, of Chester. I tried to come to the right people, but I paid five thousand dollars. I'm on parole, I went to jail because people were throwing it back at me when City Hall could have handled it in two thousand and seven. Okay, so I took a break because this is just too much. And I'm sixty, sixty years old, and the first time I've been in jail. First time I've been in jail. I'm not appreciating it, but I accept it. So I took a break, and this same problem is still going on. So I decided, catch it, press, and try again. I come to City Hall, and I get the permit, making sure that he's supposed to have this property, finding out the permit was a lie but was passed. Go to zoning, talk to Peter. Bring pictures with me, he said he was going to come out. I went up to license inspection. Jamar was, no, a young man was going to come out, he came out, he came out. I had surveillance camera because of this neighbor of mine. I had nine surveillance camera and four ring system to protect myself because I'm alone and he had witness. Not good. I should not have put all that money in my property, I should be resting and in peace. I go up to LNI, LNI sent a young man out, he came out, but he looked only at one spot. Now I'm looking at him on a surveillance camera, and he's supposed to call me because I had dogs. And I indicated to license inspection that I do have dogs, so please call because they made me out. I had miniature dovermen. I don't know how they were at, I know they had teeth. He didn't call, but he went to one spot, and I'm looking at him. He leaves, I call him back, ask if he's coming, he said he was there, he seemed, I said, no, you did not. Because there's two areas that you need to look at, and you need to come into my yard. So he did come back, he took a picture of the forest and the shed, nothing was done. However, two other people came out again, Peter and Jamar, zoning, license inspection. They looked at it, they took pictures of it, they said that is a violation, and so on, so on. Well, one part of what's done from zoning was one shed, there was two sheds. Only one shed was done. So I still have these palm trees, and I do mean, these four palm trees are tall, and the roots and the stump are big. They're between the shed and the fence that he claims is his, fine, well, but it's between the shed and the fence. I should not be taking here, he can't reach it, so I have a problem because it's next to my garage. I just put new roof on my garage, and I don't want them there anyway. There's four of them. There's behind one shed, another shed, and a fence, a wood fence. A second wood fence he put up, and then there's a metal fence. Claiming the metal fence is his, the wood fence is his, but the tree is whose? His, he can't reach it. So license inspection nor zoning did anything about the shed, the wood fence, the palm tree, I call them palm tree because they're high and they have leaves on it. He then cut it down halfway. Well, then now I'm growing again. I have the stump that's high as my breast area, and it's growing trees again. That's three hundred West twenty-third Street. That's the shed and the two, the double fence with trees between it. I'm not understanding. Then the second problem I have is my forest. The forest is three oh two West twenty-third Street. This forest is a backyard, but it looks like a forest because it's as it's as high as this pole, and it's covering the whole area. Well, that's my dog area. And my dog goes there, goes to bed, I clean my dog area very well, lately I haven't. For the simple fact that the forest is giving me brown fleas, which I never heard of, and black fleas. These fleas are being transmitted onto my dog, onto me when I go back there, this is why I haven't been cleaning it well. Because my house is infested, my dog is infested, my vet is very upset with me by hearing my dog's pills, the drops, the shampoo. I flogged, I flogged outside, which is not a closed area, but this part gives me fleas, the dogs are transferred, they have a full-size bed that is in my bedroom. They sleep in my bedroom, what's in my bedroom with them? My living, my dining, my living room, they have a baby mattress that they sleep on, next to a couch that I sit on. What is being transferred into my house? I'm knocking little brown things off of me. The forest needs to go, and I asked for a copy of the violation. I get the violation, finding out that Jamar gave the violation that should have went to three oh two to three hundred. Then, nothing is being done about the, and then Peter then throws me back to Jamar saying that he can handle it when I believe the shed's supposed to be his problem, not Jamar. I don't know whose, but the shed needs to go, someone needs to help me. This is a problem. When I went to get the violation notice, they told me I don't supposed to get the violation notice, well, I'm the complaining. How do I know that you're writing the violation correctly? We need to be on the same page. I don't care if anybody knows who I am and what I did. I need to know, are we on the same page, which apparently we're not? So I then went to, I called Judy, Richard. She told me I need to sign this piece of paper to release this violation. I gave license inspection the violation, the release form, two of them, for three hundred and three oh two. I then went downstairs and signed the same paper. And so the clerk, because the clerk is on the first look, can't get it, making sure two people had it, somebody got to give it. I have not received anything from the.
Ms. Johnson, please, Ms. Johnson, both Mr. Riker and I think I just saw Mr. Galantia here.
And also this young man with the streak, the curves. He was very spiteful, very spiteful.
If you would hang around for, after, for a few minutes, let's see what we can get accomplished.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, for sure. How are you?
And I'm sorry if I offended anyone, but right is right and wrong is wrong.
But this has been going on for a while.
Too long, too long.
We just trying to make sure what's right and what's not. Ms. Dunbar. And we're trying to be respectful of everyone's time, so we're asking you to be so kind to try your very best to minimize.
Good morning, everyone.
Three minutes.
My name is Patricia Dunbar. I live at three fifteen West Ninth Street. I'm having a problem with the vacant lot next to three fifteen West. It's been vacant for years. The original owner, which was some Indian man, well, let me retract that. My previous homeowner, they used to keep it cut, no problem. Whoever owns that property now, they came three times at the beginning of summer, and they mow the middle. The sides is out of control. They did the altar on the street, packed it in some big bags, left it there. I had to come out with my cane, with my autistics on, and put it in the corner because I said, if I fall there, that won't look good. Now, I have a big animal like this, comes out from there, God knows what else is coming out, he sits on this step like this, and I am terrified. There is a big tree, big like this pole, and it's damaging my garage. I brought a contractor, I said, the garage is leaning and bricks are, begin to fall off. And he shook the side, he said, no, your problem is from this tree. The roots are busting up the floor in the garage, and there are little trees coming up now in the garage. And the side, it's lean. I can't put on a new door because I'm not going to do that because I'm sixty-three. I ain't got that kind of money to be replacing it, no. Whoever owns that property is not taking care of it. If I left my, leave my grass and it comes up like this, I will get a ticket. Now we have a forest deal, nobody's not doing nothing, nothing. And that is unfair to me. I have a little dog, he can't go outside because fleas all around. I am not an animal control, I'm not a flea control, somebody needs to do something. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you, whoever is in charge of that, please let them do something. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to let the person in charge respond of that department. Well, seeing that nobody's going to respond, I will, I will get with. Huh?
He does.
I have it right here.
He has the list.
I got it right here. I got it right here.
She ain't signing this yet.
Um, 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 we'll make sure that the right department, since nobody wants to speak up but me, we'll make sure that it's looked into. It's not my department, but I'll make sure it's looked into.
The chief, Mike.
Ms. Kinsley. I'm sorry, Michael Kinsley, Mr. Kinsley. Mr. Kinsley? Ms. Kinsley? All right. Ms., um, Evans.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So I'm coming to you this morning with, um, a problem that has been ongoing for quite some time. So there was an ordinance passed back in May in reference to, um, oversized vehicles in the city of Chester. Um, Flower Street has become a huge problem. One, for anybody that has not been down there, there's trucks parked on both sides of the street. So when you come out down, was that 6th Street? When you come down 6th Street, you cannot look left, you cannot look right. You have to pull your vehicle all the way out and almost to the extent of getting hit. Also, when there are soccer games and the lights are then flashing, no one comes back out to change them back to regular. Tractor trailers are coming off of that ramp and they go straight through the light. They don't stop, they don't pause, which can then cause a major accident coming down 7th Street. So I want to know, um, what is the plan coming to switching out the no parking signs to the signs where we can start charging those that are parking illegally on Flower Street?
Well, I've been complaining about this for a long time. I've been to the police department. Um, I have no enforcement power because I don't have inspectors. Um, I have been in touch with, uh, Commissioner Gretzky and also, uh, Major Katrina Blackwell. I mean, you know, I'd spoken to you and I was down there last month about these trucks. I've been complaining about trucks all over the city, parking on our city streets because they damage our streets, you know? And then, uh, there have been some, um, concerns, uh, with the, from the neighbors. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a few people that are complaining about, um, and I'm not saying a few meaning a little. It's a lot of people complaints that I get, you know? And there have been a couple of other people who have come here to counsel. Um, the enforcement piece comes with the police department. I did have no parking signs put down there. But then that section of Flower Street from 6th to, to the train trestle or to 4th Street, I believe it may be state. Is it state, Michael?
That's, uh, Flower.
Flower Street? What, which part of it? Is it from 7th, from 7th to?
Flower Street from 291 up to 9th is the state.
From 291 up to, to what?
9th Street.
To 9th Street, so that's the state. And so, um, I don't know. There's still a question up in the air as to whether it's our police that will do the enforcement piece, but I have no authority. Streets, streets are my, it's my department.
So during the 7 o'clock meeting, I had spoke to the Chief of Staff and he has stated that those no parking signs had to be taken out and new signs had to be put in. He also stated that signs had been ordered. It has been maybe a month, maybe a month and a half. Um, and the, the problem, the, the major problem is I have my wit. Me, I can drive out, I can navigate, I can determine if a truck or whatever is coming. But if the light is constantly flashing, the tractor trailers are flying down 7th, down Flower Street and you're trying to get out to go either way, it's going to be a major accident.
Sure.
So I'm trying to prevent somebody's grandma, somebody aunt, somebody uncle who does not have their full wit that is still driving from getting injured.
And also coming out of 6th Street, you have no visibility in terms of if you want to make a right turn.
That's what I'm referring to.
You know? And, and, and if they're parked there near the corner. Now, the signs that I put out, I was told that I need signs. And I did speak to, um, I believe Rodney was ordering the signs that we were told to get, no parking with arrows going both ways, which would cover. Because I was told that the parking signs that I put out, we had put out there, no parking signs. It was about three of them. They said that if only if it was, the truck had parked right there in front of the sign could, I was told this by the police, could they, you know, enforce anything? If the truck is not parked in front of the sign, but I figured if I put three parking signs out, no parking signs out there and spaced them, then they would know that there's no parking. But now I'm being told I have to get the no parking signs with the arrows going both ways.
Well, I honestly, I honestly don't feel like that's going to matter because they just blatantly do not care. They're also down there prosecuting and bringing their bids and different things.
I heard that too. I heard that and reported that too.
It's just, uh, it's very bad. So you have the school age kids walking past. You never know who is operating these trucks. So it is a huge public safety concern. So I don't know who's, who has to fix it, who can fix it. But this has been an ongoing issue that has been brought to council, I want to say, this entire year. So if something can be done, and also if whoever's responsible for those blinking lights, if they can switch them back once the soccer games are over, because that's also a huge problem.
I did talk to, um, the Commissioner, uh, Gretzky about that too, that, to make sure that once the game is over, that the lights go back the way that they're supposed to, you know? Because it's causing some logistical problems, you know?
So who would the state show contacts since that's their highway?
Well, you shouldn't have to contact the state. We, oh, you're talking about in terms of Penn Dot?
Maybe they can get the ball.
Let me research that. I, let me research that.
Okay.
Let's see.
Thank you.
Michael, um, Mr. Galante.
Yes.
Who's in charge of the, uh, lights on that section of Road?
Flower? That, that would, well, if, if the light on Flower Street that you're talking about, Fourth and Flower, I've been in contact with Signal Service. Seventh and Flower. I've been in contact with Signal Service to find out if there's some kind of electrical issue going on out there. I'll get a report back on that, uh, but that would be our responsibility. All traffic signals in the city are the responsibility of the city.
But, but as far as the streets with the trucks parked on there, do I have to go to the state?
Issue with the police, I believe, um, and that would have to be better answered by Commissioner Gretzky.
And the Commissioner has been in touch with the state police. Um, and I know it's been a pain, but he has been in touch with the state police and they are working, doing their due diligence, due diligence to try to work out, um, a fix for that area. So it's, it's, it's not like we, it's something that we have not, something that we've ignored. We have not ignored it. It's a, it's a problem and we're trying to fix it. Thank you.
Um, good morning.
Morning.
Okay, um, the woman who just spoke, yes, there, there is a problem. But I, I did notice one thing. Whoever was living in the trailer is gone. That trailer is no longer there. But it is a visible, and I frequent that area because my daughter lives in that area. So I'm glad that y'all are looking into that. Just one question I have today. Is there a reason why Councilman Roots votes no for the expenditure list all the time? I have to address it. Okay, I can ask Councilman Roots. Why do you vote no all? You're not getting the information, is, yet? You're not getting the information?
I've answered this question multiple times.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking again.
Yes, you are. If we all voted no, the bills would still be paid. The checks that have already been released will not be brought back. It's something that's brought to council on a monthly basis or a bimonthly basis that our vote has no bearing on. It shouldn't be brought here.
What's it? It shouldn't be brought here?
The expenditure report.
Shouldn't be brought.
It has no bearing. If we all vote yes, nothing changes. If we all vote no, nothing changes. I believe the role of Mayor and Council with our votes is if it's yes, something moves forward. If we say no, something ceases, something stops. As you know, these expenditure reports are nothing but a check run from the time period that it's presented. Many of those checks have already left the building. Several of those checks have been cashed. I can't go tell Pico after we all vote no, that we're going to go get your money. We want our money back. It really is an exercise of frutility, not necessary. That's why I vote no.
Okay, but you do get a chance to look at the reports and, and see what expenditures are going out, right? You are getting it in time to at least look at it.
I do look at it, yes.
Okay. And you're voting no because it's not necessary that the council votes for it because it's already been done. It's a done deal. That's what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to follow up, um, Ms. Smith, and the Councilman said it, exercise and futility. If we all voted no, um, on that, on that, uh, particular item, then the next time it came up, it probably would not come up. Meaning the expenditure list itself.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. Um, commenting on the Flower Street situation, just a little quick commercial. Last week, the lights were completely off. There were no SAWs, I call them seesaw signs that had the stop sign, they were not up. And I stood on that corner waiting for transportation. And I called 911 and requested that they send someone to either put up the stop signs that are on the seahorse, I call them seahorse, because they're, because the light was not operative at all. And I witnessed trucks bowering down off of the, um, exit down 2nd Street. And they didn't yield. So I guess they thought, they didn't even think that they should yield to the 3rd Street traffic. It was a young man that was trying to repair in the traffic box. But he was, it was 30 minutes as I, I timed him. And I'm watching the trucks and traffic and he was on his phone and I guess he was trying to get direction maybe from his higher up. Point is, in that time span, there could have been a serious accident. There has been two accidents on that very corner because if you look at the, um, Delaware Port Authority fenced in, that fence had been knocked down twice. That traffic light has been completely mowed down in the last two years. So what I'm saying, what she's saying, it's a traffic, it's a traffic violation. The other problem is a lot of those trucks stop at 3rd and Flower, make a right turn, make a left turn onto Rainy Street to come out because at 2nd and Flower, there's some type of delayed deficiency where the, I guess it's a, it's a, uh, like when you come up to a light and it triggers that there's a car vehicle there, then it changes, it doesn't change. So what they're doing now is turning right off of Flower Street onto 3rd, turning left off of 3rd Street onto Rainy, turning back right onto 2nd where they have just put up a pedestrian crossing. And that's where you have trucks as well as vehicles using that route because that 2nd Street light does not operate and it backs up traffic all the way over 3rd Street back onto the, uh, 4th Street, particularly in the busy part of the day. That's my, that, that, I just wanted to piggyback on that option. But what I wanted to inquire about is the applications for the grant for $10,000 for homeowners in the city of Chester. I was told this morning that those applications will not arrive until the 26th of October. Um, and I couldn't get any type of indication. Prior to that date, it was supposed to be October the 9th, which was this past Monday, which was a holiday. So there's no official business being conducted at City Hall for constituents to come in and pick up an application. So my inquiry, my question is, is now the applications will be available on the 26th of October for the constituents to pick up? For the, uh, it's for the $10,000 for specific home repairs? That's when they'll be available, uh, Councilman Morgan?
Um, I'm not sure of that particular date, but we.
That's what I was told at the desk downstairs.
Okay. So what we did intend, and I don't know if Chief, if you wanted to give a comment on it now, you most certainly can. But we were going to give an update to that. We had some, we were working on some amendments to the contract with the administrator and getting things approved by the boards, uh, which has been some slight of the holdup. The plan is to get it out by the end of this month. But Chief, I don't know if you want to chime in on it just to give some clarity while you have the floor now, I guess, on that question?
Sure. Um, so she's absolutely correct. We are set, scheduled to release on October 26th.
Oh, microphone, sorry, I can use the microphone.
I'm sorry.
So we are scheduled to release on October 26th. Uh, the applications we have, will be available online. They will be available for pickup here in, uh, City Council at the front desk. Right now, we just got the contract backed. We need to get that to the mayor for his review and legal for their review and approval. Once that's done, all the other applications and everything else guidelines are all ready to, to move forward. Uh, we do want to give ourselves just another week or so to just make sure everything's ironed out before we actually do the release on the 26th.
So my question is at that juncture, is there a specific deadline for those applications to be submitted?
There's no deadline.
No. But as soon as possible, as soon as possible that you get your information, all of your documents together, you should bring it in. You can't just bring in your application in without your documentation, whether it's your W2s, your DED, your information. Because if you just bring your application in, it's just going to sit to the side until everything comes together. So in order for your potential project to move forward, you have to bring everything together so we can start the process.
And those documentations are outlined in the application itself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman, can I, can I ask you too, since we're talking about that, do you have to be? Um, you know, a lot of people came to the meeting. Does your name have to be on that list, that sign up sheet?
No.
In order to get an application?
No.
So, okay.
The applications, no, no, it doesn't. The applications, as, as mentioned, will be on the website and will have physical applications for the homeowners in the front lobby as well. And if you're a contractor, it'll be the same thing. If you're a contractor looking to potentially be the individual, the, the business or the team to do the work on a project, you can also reach, uh, get the contract application for approval on the website and or, um, and City Hall at the front lobby.
Okay, thank you. Because some people didn't make the meeting. They didn't make the meeting, but they want an application, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
She can't see her name all the time.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Yvonne Mitchell. Last time I was here, I was here about a boat. Now I'm here about a car. I don't think that I own the area where I live at 1435 Highland Avenue, that pathway. And 1433 is vacant. I keep that area clean. Ever since April, I've been asking these people to move this car. I've been calling over the correct, uh, Commissioner's office downstairs. They're going to try to tell me you got to have, um, windows broken out of a car for it to be abandoned. That's not true. This car has been sitting in front of this house since April. I can't even get in my driveway. Every day I got to pull behind that car, sit there like a fool to get in my driveway. When that soccer game is going on, I have to sit there and wait. I don't mind waiting for the soccer game, but I'm not waiting for this rabid. Car has been. I don't mind waiting for the soccer game, but I'm not waiting for this ragged car that's been sitting there since April. I asked, I've called over to abandon cars, nobody answered the phone. So why is that phone on? That's just taxpayers' money just being paid, and nobody answer. All you doing, all I'm doing is leaving messages. I don't, I keep that alley clean, I keep the front of the house clean, but I cannot keep it clean with this car sitting there. They trying to tell me that's a city street. That ain't no city street. The city don't own no streets. The city don't clean no streets. It's my area where I live at. And I would like to have had that car moved. I'm sick of looking, it makes me sick. Every time I go home, I gotta park behind that car to get in my driveway. If I have to pay you to give me a sticker, no overnight parking, I'll pay. But I'm just sick of looking at this dumb car. And they had four sidewalk mechanics out there underneath the car, grease all on the street in front of my house. And I, and I supposed to be happy with that. No, I don't get along with them neighbors because every time they put somebody in 1437 Holland Avenue, there's trash. That area is trash. That man sit there and let them dig a hole to put pipes down. The hole's still sitting there in that street where the kids sit there and play inside the hole inside the, inside, um, inside the house. There's a big hole that dirt belongs inside, a line that goes up down there. But this guy sold that house, but the next owner, they're still sitting there. I also, and I've been there since 1996. I'm not going nowhere. I'm 78 years old. Where I'm going? I'm not going no senior place because I'm able. All I want you to do is get that car from in front of my door.
Are you at 1435?
1435, 1433 is empty. I keep that, that area clean. I keep that pathway clean. If you come through there now, you ain't gonna find trash because every time I get out my car, I look in that pathway. But I don't need this here. I mean, it's sickening to sit there and look out my window. Every day I look at that window. I gotta look at this old car.
Can you, can you either provide us now or provide the police department or commissioner with the information of the vehicle, the car?
I already know, and I left messages over there on the phone, on the answering phone.
All right, can you give me the year, make, or the color and the model?
It's on the answering service, we're with the-
I don't have their answer and service. Can you give it to me, please? That way I can make sure it gets done.
No, I don't know it right off. But if you go, it's the only one sitting there with April sticker on the car.
All right, Councilor.
And downstairs, they gonna tell me your car ain't abandoned, unless the windows broke or the tires is flat. That's not such. If a car don't move in 30 days, it's trash. And you're sitting up there with all those sidewalk mechanics coming there, taking that lady's money. She can't get that car fixed, it's dead. Cars die.
Ms. Mitchell, Mark and I will be up right after this news.
Yeah, and you gonna see that, whatever name of the car is. I'm sick of looking at it.
Okay.
Ms. Mitchell.
What color is it?
It ain't no car, because the color going, it's silver-like. It's right there by the pathway. It's a handicap pathway there. And like, I, I pay for overnight parking there because nobody lives there. 1433 is empty.
Ms. Mitchell, do you know if the car has inspection stickers on it?
Yeah, it's got April on it. April of '23. And that's what I leave the message over. They trying to tell me the phone ain't on. Why they got that phone on over in there in the cars if nobody over there working?
You said April of '23?
April of '23. April, there's six months, almost seven months in there. It's been sitting there. And all you get is sidewalk mechanics coming there, taking that woman money. She trying to get the car fixed. Now, tell me that that car is dead. You can't fix that car. It needs a tow truck. That's what it needs.
My Commissioner's here. We'll have a conversation with-
That's who I was looking for. Is he here?
I just finished training.
Well, I've been looking for him for six months, and I ain't found him yet.
You can't, you can't go for six months. They'll be here all the time.
No, I'm, no, I don't be here, no.
No, no, that's why, listen, what we're gonna do is, I just got done training. I'm personally gonna go up to myself, and we'll go up, we'll check the vehicle out. If need be, we'll tell it today. Did you drive here today?
Oh, yeah, I got a van out there. I drive.
All right, so look, I'm parked right here. Me and you're gonna drive up together. And I'm gonna have the bed, we'll tell it out today if it needs to be.
And when you open the door, you're looking at it.
Listen, we're gonna go together.
Okay.
Start your own hut, all right?
Okay. You sure it was a real thing, but that way I'm gonna-
We're gonna go together.
I am.
You wanna go now?
Yeah, we ready. That's what I'm gonna do.
Let's go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Celine? Mr. Celine?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Councilor, I, let me, I'd like to make a few, very, just comment right quick. You know, I'm listening, I'm a listener, very good listener. And when I hear the people crying with injustice or what appear to be injustice, I, it heartfelt. And I wanna do something, you know, very little, not a lot, you know, just to, but I'm saying to you, sir, is that, going with old quotation I heard in the South when I was a little boy. It said that you cannot get blood out of a turnip. Now, we know what turnip is red and colored blood and so forth. But the thing is, turnip, turnip, turnip. We turn this around. This is just the beginning of a turnaround. We have to understand these things. And nip is very small, very beginning of a turnaround. That we, 50 years, I've been here, a little bit over, and I dealt with nine mayors. This is the nine mayor here, this honorable mayor here. And each time it got off, it was just, Inshallah, God willing, not, pardon my, brought it back. Brought it back on the mustaqim, the straight way. So we have arrived. We are here now with this mayor and administration right here. Their efforts to take it off is, can never be taken off again, ever, ever, ever. So I'm just simply asking the people to be patient. What you asking for is in the making. Just be patient, you know, Inshallah, God will, God is doing this himself. So we certainly have to understand. We certainly have to understand. I, and we speak of Jesus, the brother there, the, in charge of the blind center. They said, yes, made a great statement. It could say, he said, "Caste the people before they go blind," you know. Jesus, Jesus, if you will, sir, mayor, healed the blind, you know, let the blind see, so forth. All this is gonna be happening as we move forward. So we want to hold on as we are moving forward. Yes, my mother always says, "Take the bitter with the sweet or look on the bright side." There's quite a bit that's to be said from us, and that's gonna be our life. We have not had our life yet. And all of this is gonna go away from us. We're gonna move out of this. It's in the making. It's in the making. It's in the making. So, sir, I, I won't go on and on. I just wanna make a, a few key statements that's gonna be greatly beneficial for us. With that, sir, I, I, I'd like to stop at this point. I don't like coming and be a burden to you, never, until we get into the feel, the, the faith of this and, and trust in our Lord and doing what our Lord wants us to do on this earth. He's doing it from the earth, and we're doing it here on the earth, on earth as it is in heaven. I pray, sir. I thank you very much. I'd like to stop at this point. But remember, you cannot get blood from a turnip. It's the early turnaround we gonna get, all that we call for. And so, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dunlap.
Thank you, Mrs. Celine, and you're never a burden.
That's right, my favorite public comment.
Ladies, please, please. Ms. Littleton?
Good morning or afternoon, Mayor and Councilor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanna make sure that I'm being respectful, but just really speaking out of my frustration, I wanna piggyback on what Ms. Adley had said about the vehicles. It's very frustrating as a resident, 24-plus years myself, and seeing some of the seniors who've been here all their life, living in this beautiful city, to see what we've had to endure. A lot of things I stopped coming to this council meeting, talking about because it appeared that nothing was ever gonna get done. Please understand and just go with them respectfully speaking. When you see all these issues that are valid, some of the issues that people and our seniors are talking about, this goes to the welfare and the care of the beautiful residents of Chester City. This is not a joke, you know what I'm saying? And the reason why I say it's not a joke, because I know than other municipalities, these issues would get taken care of because it's about the safety of the residents. And to hear, you know, maybe somebody can give me some explanation on this, to hear that it's, I can't do anything, it's out of my control, well, I'm just wondering, who's running Chester City, okay? And with these trucks, if an ordinance has been passed in this city, who has the authority and jurisdiction to enforce an ordinance to protect the residents of Chester City? Does the residents now? If it's been a year, if something's not working, maybe we gotta go a little step further. Maybe we go and you barricade those areas and demand what needs to happen in this city. Because we can't keep on just waiting and not getting responses. Not having clear understanding of who's responsible for what needs to be done in this city. And it's not fair to the residents. We thought we elected people to stand up in our behalf, to fight these issues. And I'm glad that things are getting done, but applauding after years and months of things, this unacceptable. So I just wanted to pull that part out, okay? We gotta do better. And so if we, you know, and so I don't see why it's an issue again. You know, I talked about Ninth Street, and we should have already had a slowdown on Ninth Street where our beautiful children go to school at. Came to the city, sent me to Pendote. Pendote said, "Come back." I've been back, bounced back and forth. Called in about 20 accidents on that street. When are we gonna start doing the right thing concerning the residents in this city? It's not that difficult. And if Chester City doesn't have the jurisdiction to do it, who does? That's what I wanna know as, so who do we need to go to if we can't come to our council to say this is what needs to be done? Who do we need to go to? And if it isn't simple as we are saying it is, we need to get this work done and stop allowing the residents to suffer because it's not a funny matter. I know we laugh. Okay, I'm sorry, please, if I can just ask really quickly. I brought this to the council before. Chester City is having an influx of homeless, but not only homeless people who are drug addiction. I brought this to the council. And I go out here and I talk to these people. Some of them are telling me how they're getting in this city. Okay, that they're literally actually being dumped in this city, brought down. This is their own words. What are we doing about that? Because I'm concerned again about the safety of the residents. And that opioid money that's being dished through Delaware County, since they're possibly, at their words on the street, is a part of sending them and dumping them here? Are they gonna dump some of that money here, or do we have to go out there and ask for it? How much of that money is gonna come to Chester City? Is there anybody in Chester City fighting for that drug money, okay? The settlement, so that we can deal with the issues that we already have and people are continuing to dump in our city? And that's the question I wanna ask. What is the plan moving forward with this? The, because our children are being frightened out here. This is not funny. We don't want anybody to get hurt, okay? And this is a serious issue for us. This is not a joke. Other municipalities will not allow this, and they will protect their people. People are walking up and down our street, okay, at all times of night, doing crazy stuff, okay, talking to our children. And we don't want anybody to get hurt in this city. And so I'm asking, does the council know about this? I know, Councilman West, you mentioned this, I mean, William, you mentioned this before. And what is this city doing about protecting, okay? And do you know about people just being dumped in this city? Because that's what they're telling me. Now, I believe in helping people. People need, I believe in that. I'm not saying, let's help them. But if you're gonna be dumping people in here, dump some money up in this city so we can deal with this problem. Because we got enough issues in Chester City, as you can hear today. And I'm sorry, but I'm frustrated because Chester residents do deserve better, okay? We gotta work better for us. The residents, people who are paying taxes, these seniors, they don't deserve this. And I'm really holding back my tears. It's not a funny matter anymore. It never has been. And I know we wanna shift the blame. It's not about that. We gotta get together and do the right thing up in here because it's not fair to the residents. A year out, two years, three years, trying to solve a problem is unacceptable, and it's no longer funny. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Littleton. I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond. I feel led to respond. Sometimes when people make comments, they make comments or have, bring their concerns as if we don't live here. As if we don't have children here. As if we haven't been here for a very long time. I've been in this city all my life. Raised my kids here. I raised my grandkids here. And a lot of times I hear a lot of negative stuff, but there's some positive stuff that is happening in this city, a lot. So much so where we have people from Philadelphia and their persons coming here asking us for help to reduce crime in their communities, but I don't hear about that. I don't hear about that. They come to us to say, "How did you do it?" "We've upgraded our parks." I don't hear about that. "We provided our residents with new trash cans, and we try to encourage them to put the trash in the cans so we can keep our city a little cleaner." We do have street sweepers going in certain parts of this community. It's unfortunate that you have a resident next door to you whose grass is high. And hopefully, hopefully, the right department will correct that and will get that corrected. Nobody wants to live next door to somebody who has grass five, six feet tall, nobody. And so we, we, we accept that, and we, we need to correct that. But there are a lot of things, when it talks about protecting our people, quite frankly, I think we do a better job than a whole lot of municipalities when it comes to protecting our people. I've not heard anybody come in here and say they were mugged, they were beaten, they were robbed. Nothing like that. If grass, and I'm not making that, I'm not minimizing that, please, and trucks, and I'm not minimizing that, are the issues that we face here in this city, we're doing pretty darn good. We're doing pretty, ma'am, ma'am, I didn't, I don't interrupt. I don't know what your problem was with that individual. I wasn't there. I don't know what it was. And I'm not minimizing that. I'm saying that we work. It's almost as if that, you know, like, we don't see what's going on, or we are not responding. And we're responding, we're responding the best way we can. We have, we have, we have a police force that should be 125 officers. We lucky if we have 60. If we have 60. I know, it's funny. If we have 60. And we, I think we do pretty good. We try to get our own residents to become policing officers. We try to get our own residents to become firefighters because to think is important. And we gonna keep on trying to do that. Nobody's minimizing anybody else's pain. But we will, but we will continue to do our very best. And we also gonna continue to point out those things that are happening in this community that are positive. And we'll continue to work with each and every one in this community. We live here. We raise our families here. And we want this to be the best city in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There was, there was someone who did not know about signing. Two or one? Two? Two? Come on. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Elizabeth Rainman, I live 1206 Beverly Lane in Chester. You've been to many of our homeowners' association meetings. Uh, about ten homeowners have been calling over here for the last three years for our streetlights. Nothing has been done. We also been calling over because the back of my house, which is by DeMarco's, that alleyway has a great big pothole. And another one is developing, which nothing has been done. Another thing I wanna know, those houses were for sale, not for rent. How many people are allowed to live in a house in Chester? I have a family next door to me and it's gotta be at least seventeen to twenty people. And it's constant noise, constant trash. They're parking all in New York. I've spoke to them several times, being nice. But something has to be done. It's trash all over the place. It's trash all over the place from DeMarco's. I've talked to them. It's a mess. You got five people on my block that are out every day cleaning up front and back. It's unfair to us. We're trying to survive in Chester, we're trying to make Chester great just like you are. But we can't do it without any help.
Before you go any further, you said you had your homeowners' association meetings?
Right, you came to several of them.
I did?
Yes, you did.
And when was this, ma'am?
Oh, well, the homeowners' association dissolved about four or five years ago. We had it on Thirteenth Street at the center, behind the Dollar Store. You came to the meetings, you were there.
Okay.
I wasn't present, you were there. I, I called you and asked you to come and you came.
You said several meetings?
Several meetings, you came to two meetings up there.
Okay.
When we had homeowners' association.
Okay.
Okay, but in the meantime, we've been calling for the last four years about the, the streetlights. Nothing has been done. We called about the pothole, nothing has been done. We called about the trash. And I'm there to the four or five people that get out and clean the block.
When you say you called?
We called City Hall. We talked to whoever they put on the phone. I can't tell you who everybody spoke to because I wasn't there to hear their call. But it's a serious problem. Now, my main issue is how many people are allowed in a home?
I really don't know, I don't think we have an ordinance on the number of people in a home.
You don't have an ordinance, so how many people can live in a home?
No, no, we don't.
I, I haven't heard of it.
I don't think we have an ordinance of how many people can live in a home. I think we have a, do have an ordinance on how many cars, vehicles are supposed to be to each household, but not of individuals that should live in a home, no.
So I can put thirty people in one home and it's okay?
It depend, it depends on whether.
Basically is what you're saying.
It wouldn't be okay.
If it's a family dwelling.
It's a family dwelling.
Then it's limited to family members. If it's a multi-dwelling unit, then it's multiple families.
Well, it's a family dwelling. And there's a lot of people.
What's, what's the address?
I'm 1206, they're 1204. It is a violation and then when you say something, you're wrong. But nobody is there listening to the noise, the running, the banging, the slamming, the trash. You getting all kinds of animals up there. Because when they throw out the trash, it's about twenty bags and the trash is all over the ground.
Mr. Lightner said he would, he would investigate it.
All right, I'm done.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did you get her name and address?
First of all, good morning, Mayor. Members of the ca, okay.
Just one second. We need, ma'am, we need your name, your first and last name and your address for the record.
She was walking as she said it.
The address is 1206 Beverly.
Thank you. So could you give us your name and your address?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Thomas Gordy, I live at 1111 Butler Street. Um, I was born in this city. I, uh, have always loved this city as a place of my birth. I moved back here recently, became married. And I am happy and always want to be positive about this city. So the questions I have, I have two questions to ask. I ask them in earnestly that there is no saying that you are not doing your job. I'm just saying that we can do our job some be, a little better if, if we, uh, bring things up and work at it. I've heard many people here speak about animal control and overgrowth in the city. I and my wife had a problem with, uh, raccoons, possums, mus繁ts, all kinds of things coming in, into our property. And, um, we asked for help and we were able to get help, right? People came in, cleaned up the place and, and I'm very proud about that. Not gonna put the person on the spot because they came and did what they were supposed to do. Two questions. Overgrowth in the city. I've seen what appear to be abandoned houses or houses where people have died and I have a question about that. Where does the ownership revert back to? Does it go to the county, to the city, or, or who? And if so, who is responsible for keeping that overgrowth down? Like the lady said, it's grown up to the sky. And that brings animals into it, it's like a jungle. So therefore, somebody has to be responsible to make sure that that gets cleaned up. Right? And make the city a much better place. The other question is recycling. Uh, we were told that after we got the new things and we were very grateful for them because you can put a lot more trash in them, no animals can get in them and that's great. Right? And, um, that's fine. But the recycling we did, we put it out, nobody came to get it. I asked yesterday, a guy was getting ready to take it, but the supervisor said to him, "Don't take that, that's regular trash, this is recycling. Put it back on the, on the curb and we'll get it." My question is, will they get it? Because they didn't do it in the past two or three weeks, right? Uh, that, that is my question. And as I said, I mean these things in, in earnest. And I have nothing but, but good feelings about what this city is doing and I just wanna see it go further. Thank you for so much.
What's, what is your address?
1111 Butler Street, Chester, PA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, with regard to the recycling, recycling is picked up every Wednesday for the whole entire city. And what I'll do is call the supervisor to our vendor, trash vendor, and let them know that your recycling has been missed for the past three weeks. Okay. I apologize for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, Mayor, um, I would just like to announce there's, there's, um, UPS store and a FedEx store downtown and they also do copies. So you don't have to go out of the city if you need to send packages or if you want copies. The address is 518 Avenue of the States. Now, I thought that was very important for us here in the city. But you know, there, I, I received a letter from our trash removal. They sent it to all the council people. Chester has a problem. We don't recycle and I don't understand why. Reci, recycling has a lot to do. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And to teach our children how to recycle. Teach your children how to pick up the trash that they're throwing out here on the street. So we need, we need everybody in the city of Chester recycling. That's what we need. And that's what our trash company asked us for, trash removal. They asked us, everybody in Chester need to be recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Roots?
Thank you, good morning. Ms. Dunbar, I'll see you after the meeting. And to Ms. Littleton, I just wanna address one of the issues you brought up, which is a very serious one that, uh, we are aware of. That is the people being dropped off here in the city. It's been happening for years. It's certainly coming to a head now. Whole busloads of people are coming in. The downtown business community has been in touch with us, I've sat with them. We're coming up with some solutions, identifying some of the problems. You may see, uh, some trees being cut on the corner up there on Seventh and Avenue of the States and Welsh to stop some of the loitering. Uh, we've been in touch with our police department, Septa Police where they hang out a lot at the, um, Transportation Center. It's gonna get some more attention with cameras and security. And we've talked to some of the mental health organizations here in the town. It's gonna take a concerted effort to, to squash this, but it is becoming a really big problem. Some people are pointing to City Team as part of the problem. I will say that they provide more help than they provide issues. But a lot of reasons why people are getting transferred here to Chester is in hopes that they could be helped by City Team. Unfort, well, I won't say unfortunately, but City Team has some very strict requirements for getting services. They only have so many beds. Uh, more people are coming into the city than can be served by City Team. So, uh, I just want you to know it's not being ignored. It is certainly being, uh, addressed in a really big way right now.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilman Morgan?
Um, just a update on, what is my train of thought? Our, since we already gave an update regarding the homeowner program, rehab program, uh, I think the young lady had mentioned it was ten thousand dollars, which is the maximum amount that we can get. Uh, but, uh, some people don't know that Delaware County has a homeowner program, rehabilitation program going on, I think it's called the, the whole home program, rehab program. Um, their requirements or eligibility requirements are different from ours as far as the income limits and things like that. However, the max allotment that they will give a household is fifty thousand dollars. So I think their applications are open now. Um, if you are looking to get some work done and you think it may exceed the ten thousand that we may offer, then please, please, you, of course, go out to the county or look on their website and, uh, try and apply and see if you're eligible for the funds that they are giving, the grant funds that they're giving to rehab homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, real quickly, um, the councilman touched on it a little. Uh, we're, we have a meeting set up with City Team to talk to City Team about, um, their feeding program, there's homelessness, um, that has been happening here in the city of Chester with persons who are less fortunate than ourselves who are arriving. City Team does a lot of good work, but at the same time, City Team has some responsibility to share, um, and to bear when it comes to, um, outside residents, outside persons coming to the city. A lot of times even in their feeding capacity and, and it's not just City Team, I wanna say this to anybody who's, who's helping, considers themselves helping, uh, those who are less fortunate, don't forget the cleanup portion of it. When you feed them and do other things for those persons, please don't forget the cleanup portion. A lot of times, uh, after we do those things that are great and nice, they leave a lot of stuff behind and we have to be mindful of, of the cleanup. The reason most of these folks are coming in, and I've had conversations, I met with the union guys and ladies from Septa. The folks are catching the bus. It is a certain route that they take, the folks that end up here in Chester. They, they actually catch the bus and many of them have come from Kensington. And if you've ever heard or been to Kensington, you know that's a serious problem there in Kensington. City Team has become somewhat of a magnet, but it's not just City Team. They arrive here in hopes of either sharing or selling their wares, their drugs. And eventually they catch the bus back to Kensington. It's been, it has been a process that has been going on for quite some time now. And as was stated, it's some, it's not something we have overlooked or turned away from. We're working and should be working collectively to figure out how do we, how do we, um, correct this problem. Once again, I wish we had, I wish we had a hundred and twenty-five police officers. I wish we had, we've been pushing for cameras for the, um, bus station for the longest. Hopefully and finally we'll get some. Um, I do wanna thank the Streets Department and I think it was also Parks and Recreation Department for the work that they did downtown Chester in beautifying our area downtown. A lot of times we don't give those guys and those ladies enough credit, but I wanna thank them for all the work that they put in, um, in helping us with our downtown, uh, and making that area nicer. That's it for me. Uh, we will be going into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilwoman?
Um, I just wanna say that, um, Ms. Johnson, I empathize and I know what you've been through because it's been going on now for about three, four years or something like that. So today, I think, uh, we suppose them meet. You and Michael will talk about the sidewalk and then are you gonna meet with Ms. Johnson about the, um, LNI stuff with the neighbor? Okay. And then I just wanna say too that the, um, hm? Yeah, the shit. Oh, okay, all right. And then, um, also I wanna say with recycling, we do need you to recycle. And if there's a concern about your recycling not being picked up on a Wednesday, please call me. What I do see a lot around the city is that we have residents who are mixing, co-mingling the regular trash with the, and I see it, I see it. I'm out there, I see it. Yeah, the co-ming, well, the residents do it and the workers have done it too. I hadn't gotten to that part, okay? But there are residents who are co-mingling, I see it all the time, regular trash with recycling. And then if your recycling is put out on a day other than Wednesday, we're telling them not to pick it up because we have to, the city, account for the amount of recycling that we take in and turn into the, um, our trash facility. We have to, we have numbers that we have to report on recycling every year. At, there's an end of the year report. So we do need your support. So we do need your support in terms of recycling properly. And then I'm constantly on the phone with our trash vendor whenever I see their people co-mingling, you know, the regular trash and the recycling. So we are working on that. And the trucks, that's been a real issue with me, you know? And abandoned cars, we have abandoned cars all over the place, you know? So that's a real issue. Mr. Lightner, if you and I can get together, I really need that inspector. I really do. So that I can address some of these issues. And I need some enforcement to be able to enforce certain things in my department. Okay, thank you.
And don't forget, Mr. Lightner, we need about 50 more police officers. With that said, we're going to executive session. This meeting is now adjourned.